All right, so I'll call the meeting to order at 4:32. We could just stand for a bunch.
Congratulations to the five of us states in America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to?
How do I do it?
So that it's not like I'll have to just...
Yeah.
Very smart. We're just, we have to call in one of the board members on the phone she's away. Do I have to push my number and it's in the dialog?
Okay.
Just have to hit the line at the top, the top one, can you get a line out? The top one. I'd say top one. Where does this come from? Yeah.
Hello?
Hi Jen, it's Jessica. I have you on speakerphone at the meeting. It's already started. If you could just state your name and your location.
Okay, I'm Jennifer, and I'm paying for now.
Okay, perfect, thanks Jen. Name.
Name.
And Forrest just walked in too. I just texted you while my text was going through. So you're probably getting a hundred things when you walk in.
Oh, you're rambling.
Along me, folks. All right, so we already did a bunch of all that, and Jen is on the line. This is Jen. All right. All right, so first up, what we'll call public comment. Is there any public comment today? So principals' end of the year summary.
So I just did a summary for everyone. I just reviewed the elementary school, the middle school, and district with end of the year hiring that we had done and kind of where we were at. And I'll just go through the bullets, and if there were questions, either Stephanie or I can answer them. In the elementary school, we hired Rachel Sukul and Molly Lau for grade three. Heather Lister moved from grade four to grade two. Chris Small moved from grade three to grade four. Tammy Thompson was hired as an interventionist. She had been in that position as a one-year fill-in, and she's transitioned to that position because through CARES money, we had an additional interventionist. We hired a new school counselor, or in the process of hiring a new school counselor. That's not finalized yet, still needs to meet with the superintendent. And that student, Janine Richards, transitioning over to the additional district social worker position. A new case manager has been hired. Currently, Stephanie is back to hire an art teacher and an assistant principal. And then we made updates to, or in the process of making updates to the technology curriculum, and the methodology of instruction is shifting due to students having one-to-one devices. In the middle school, we moved Patty Escanio from grade seven science to grade eight. Andrew Coderia shifted from grade six science to social studies. We hired a new grade seven science teacher. We hired a new grade six math teacher. We're in the process of hiring a grade six science teacher. And also in the process of hiring math and reading interventionists. Those were also positions that we, the board approved through CARES money. And also in the process of hiring a front office administrative assistant. And we still need to replace a Title I tutor. She had relocated in March, so that will be done over the summer. And then district-wide, we're in the process of hiring a new school nutrition director. We have hired a district-wide BCPA, that again was through CARES money. And also we hired the additional district-wide social worker. And then we're working as a team, as an administrative team, to develop a trauma-informed behavior intervention program that we're really excited about and will be sharing more information about as we get underway in the school year.
I have a question. And it might even be on the agenda, so I haven't worked on this. So my question is, the computer lab on elementary. It was brought to my attention that we no longer have a computer lab. It's been transformed into offices. And we will have a mobile computer person traveling around. Just a little concerned that, number one, the board wasn't made aware of that. You know, he was typically made aware of anything like that. Number two, what are we using these offices for? And what's the reason for not having a computer lab anymore?
I mean, I can start in reverse order and turn it over to you. No, and I think it, I think one of the things that a lot of schools have seen in 2021, especially the onset of COVID, is with one-to-one devices. A dedicated computer lab is obsolete. A lot of schools have been moving away from that and said, "My favorite is the one-to-one." And I think that's out of the space constraints, at least as it's been sold to me. That was a discussion here as well, so I'll let Erin take it from there.
Just one thing on that. That is a huge concern for me, that we are getting rid of the computer lab because of the kids being on the computer more, coming back from being remote. That's a huge concern, that we will see the kids in classes on computers more rather than going outside a classroom for a special and using the computers there. I'm hoping that there's more teaching going on in the classroom, less computer use now that we're back. And from what I hear, there's a lot of computer use inside the classrooms. A lot more than there was pre-COVID. So I think I can speak to some...
So I'm kind of concerned about that.
Yeah. So, you know, I just started back to life first. So I haven't had a chance to have conversations with everybody, including people directly involved in the technology, and I plan to. But we've kind of talked a bit about it over time. So as you know, the middle school had two positions at one point, a technology and a librarian, and that was combined. It was always like a concern, is that going to be had over in our end? And we don't want to do that. We see that kids need those foundational technology skills, whether it, you know, is more robotics for some and basic skills for others and all of that. But if you remember a couple of years back, we talked about possibly relocating the computer lab. We were going to try to put it next to the library and have it kind of co-mingle and maybe do some makerspace things together. And at the time, we had priced that out and to move, at the time, we were thinking of moving all the desktops. And it would have cost, I think, between $12,000 and $15,000 to do that. So we put that off for that summer. And then we started to move towards the one-to-one devices. So it was, you know, what do we do if half the kids have a personal device they can bring to the classroom versus you have to maintain the desktops for the other students? We talked about maybe having a program look different for K through two versus three through four, because we moved to the one-to-one for grades three and that one. Couple of things changed since that last discussion. Number one, we added another second-grade classroom and some other positions. So that space that we were thinking of maybe reconfiguring has, you know, don't really have as much classroom spaces as we would need to maintain a designated computer lab. The other piece is, we weren't until last year planning on doing one-to-one Chromebooks for K one and two. And we did do that last year. We were fortunate to be able to do that. So now it, you know, and kids, I mean, even us as adults, we're not using desktops that much. So it's, the shift has been moved to laptops or Chromebooks. And we're still thinking that we'll have a cart of laptops, so they can do, there's different things that you can do on laptops versus Chromebooks. So we want to make sure that they're prepared for life to do both. But we feel like, you know, where the kids have those devices, we can go to them and they can have that instruction in their classroom. I think, to your other point, Jessica, about like us being heavy on technology, I think one thing is that the teaching during this period did rely heavily on technology, obviously, starting two springs ago. Teachers had their curriculum built in there and had routines with kids. So I foresee going back in the fall not being so dependent on the device. But there, it's a great platform. We have our curriculum in there now, where we didn't always have that captured. You know, but does that mean that we can't like print something out? Can the kids just write in their notebook? No. But I think where it was mid-year, we had students coming back sometimes just for the last four weeks or for the last marking period. So where they had already kind of started in that system. And we had students who, in maintaining the online piece, they had to be out because some kids had to be out for 20 days because a family member had COVID. They could still engage and do things because we were kind of keeping the class on that platform. So I think it's really unique to this year. I think it's been a nice added feature for us, but we're not going to be dependent on it throughout entry school. We want to, you know, and I think it's even summer school. We've said, no Chromebooks. We're just doing, you know, regular teaching. We will still use it, you know, it's great for, you know, things like peer editing, you know? And it's great for, to differentiate instruction. Kids can go on and, I don't know that I'm two reading levels below Erin, and I'm able to do stuff and everything just looks equal. And I feel really, you know, accomplished and happy, and I can share my work, and my teacher can edit it before Erin, like, peer edits it and stuff. So I think it's a great tool and it's a great resource, but those are paper-based curriculum materials as well. So I think that's a conversation that I'll be having more with my staff, like, how do we strike that balance? You know, because we know the reality too, is outside of the educational hours, I know I have a 10-year-old, and I'm a pedophile for fun and everything, like, I wore the necker because with everybody being busy during COVID, we became pretty reliant on it. So I think it's a conversation with us as educators and connecting the home to it.
Would your goal be to send them home every day like we had last year?
I don't know. Originally, when we went to the Chromebooks, because we were just talking third grade and up, we were going to not send them home for elementary and just do it for middle. Didn't have like that much damage, that was one of the concerns. And, you know, kind of protective software and all that. So I don't know, that's a discussion, I don't know if we started that at the SAE, but I'm sure we'll be talking about it, depending on what the fall looks like. You know, it might be, let's keep on bringing them back and forth just in case for a little while, you know? One thing that was nice is it makes them familiar with the device too. And they could see the curriculum and see things. If kids are out sick, like I said, they could access it. So it is nice, because sometimes they could be sick for three days, but if they could go online and get their assignments, it might be helpful. So it's yet to be determined, put in from a kindergarten backpack and send them to the bus like that.
That's a minor.
It is a little bit of a challenge. But definitely worth the discussion, but I think we're kind of seeing where we are at any point.
So I'm going to be honest with you, I haven't really had time for this conversation because I feel like what I heard was COVID again. And I feel like that when we go back in September, we need to put COVID behind us. It's concerning to me that the curriculums are going to be on the devices in September. I'm just hoping that we would be going back and we would be going back to what we were previously COVID.
Well, I'm saying, so the curriculum, I'm just saying, I feel like because of all this, we've captured our curriculum electronically more. So it's not like, oh my gosh, this teacher's retiring, and here's all our curriculum lesson plans. It's like, we have more of that electronically to be able to build off of. And, you know, oh, I've got a kind of a different group this year, and, you know, we're starting from a different point. We can manipulate it. So I'm just saying, for curriculum planning purposes, it's been nice to have things electronic for the teachers. I'm not saying that the daily work from a student would be online. I'm talking about kind of the behind-the-scenes planning and documents. There are a lot of interventions that are available, like I said, so you can differentiate. So I think we've had that electronic for years. The problem is, we didn't have a device for every student. And it was, kids had to be kind of considered for, do we give them a device to go online and do that? And now where everybody has one, it can be, okay, you guys, you have the next 20 minutes, you can either catch up on your reading or do this, or go on and do, maybe see kids, or do that. Like, it's, it allows some more freedom to differentiate. We're not looking at kids glued to a screen, we're adults.
And I don't think we'll be going back to desktops in schools. Don't see that. You know, they're still useful sometimes at the high school level. We can use machines to deliver more computing power for different applications. But for the elementary level, I don't think desktops are going to be necessary. I think the affordability gives the flexibility that you need and want in elementary building.
So that lab turned into what? When do we turn that lab into a computer lab?
We're actually going to touch on that a little bit in the next presentation. Because there's going to be interventions, social, emotional, behavioral supports. So we are going to talk about that, but they're not offices. Any other questions regarding principals' report? So SEL survey resulting, results and plans. I think we'll get it. There are comments in the presentation. Welcome, everyone. Didn't know we were going to have such a wonderful audience with us today. Thank you so much. How are you? Jessica Parsons is our Director of Special Education at Seabrook. She's had the balance of practice for the board and administrators. My name is Caroline Ericalian, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services at SAE 21. We have a lot of information, but we're going to try to keep it as succinct as possible. Okay? Because there's a lot of data, a lot of results and recommendations. I'm going to go over it briefly, not over every single detail, because we would be here for a really long time. But we have these documents posted publicly, as well as these handouts, if anyone else wants to take one home. It'll take more time to go through all the details. So let me give you a little bit of the background, and then after I talk about the survey, I'm going to hand it over to Jessica, who's going to talk about the plan moving forward, what they've done and what they've, what they plan to do next year. So this survey administered to Seabrook Elementary School staff just happened this past, a year ago, May, May and June. This started with Dr. Lupini, our superintendent in 2019. He had an open house at Seabrook Elementary School in December of 2019, and some themes emerged. Staff were looking for some supports for student behavior. Staff were looking for some tools for their classrooms. And people were talking about programs that were not necessarily fulfilled with fidelity to support some of these issues in their classrooms. So Dr. Lupini asked me to find some help, find some consultants, some outside consultants. And we found Eric Mann and Bree Frederick. So Eric Mann is a licensed clinical social worker. Hold on a second. There we go. Pretty much one of the best in the state. So Eric Mann's a licensed clinical social worker who works for SARESC. I mean, he works with districts to work on creating multi-tiered systems of support. Due to some of the needs that the teachers and the staff were looking for, he recommended that we also bring in a board-certified behavior analyst to partner with him as we were looking to create some new structures and supports for teachers. The very first meeting with Seabrook Elementary School staff and Eric and our BCPA was March 6th, the week before the shutdown, the week before March 13th, when the entire world shut down. However, we continued to work together on many drafts of the survey, dozens of questions, while simultaneously reconfiguring how we would deliver to all kids remotely. We sent the survey to our teachers, actually, all of our staff, and had the results May 26th to June 2nd. So what we did was, we sent it to all the staff, but first, we sent it to the leadership team, which are administrators and grade-level leads. So we had 39 respondents, 40%, there's a little over 40% of the staff responded. Almost half of those staff identified as teachers. So you can see here why I'm not going to go through every single piece of it, because this was a very long survey. There were eight parts to the survey around being regulated and self-aware adults, climate, culture, connection, common understanding of behavior, a continuum of regulation, support, common language, and SEL curricula infused in daily life, family communication and partnership, and adequate resources. So this is a summary of the results of these features. So the first piece, the first feature one, the degree to which adults manage stress in order to maintain and model a well-regulated mind, mood, and body. So the survey data indicated well-established and trusting relationships among staff, so staff with each other. Half of respondents, however, reported less reliance upon administrators during times of challenge or stress. The most common stressors indicated were poor communication, the volume of initiatives, and inadequate resources. And remember the timing of this survey, this was right after we shut down due to COVID. The second feature was about climate, culture, and connection. And I know that in our board meetings, we've talked about culture in the past. So this was something that we really wanted to tap into and find out what staff were thinking about how they, how they need supports, how they were viewing their supports. So again, respondents felt valued by colleagues and well-connected to their colleagues. They take pride at working at Seabrook Elementary School. Fewer than half agreed that students treat each other kindly and respectfully, however. Staff interact positively with students and self-report interacting positively, at least once a day with every student in their classroom. Nearly 50% felt that fewer than 75% of students have a positive connection to an adult. So that's a piece I wanted to highlight, because we want to have more connections with students and adults. The third feature was about a common understanding of behavior. This is really important as we partnered with the behavior analyst, because we wanted to see how our staff viewed behavior, what's the purpose of behavior. So luckily, it was very positive that they reported a common belief that behavior is communication, serves a purpose, and it's influenced by circumstances. They also agreed that staff and administrators should have a common way to understand expected or unexpected or impulsive behavior. And that piece right there really drives a lot of the recommendations of the plan moving forward that Jessica is going to talk about. The fact that all staff really should have a common understanding and common supports and have to deal with behavior and understand the purposes of behavior and what they serve students. Feature four, continuum of regulation support, systems and practices that support regulation. So this really revealed that teachers are asking for support. Teachers are asking for tools, supports, a system, to start from common core values, have consistent supports and programs in the school, so that when behaviors do arise, when students are showing that they're dysregulated and they need support, that it's the same across the school. Five and six is about common language and SEL curricula infused in daily life. This is something that the Seabrook Elementary School team has been working on for years, I think. They've had a, they've had an SEL team and they've been working on this, having a common language and having curriculum. However, I think the staff is asking, is asking for more and asking for it more consistently across the school. Feature seven, family communication and partnership. 54% of respondents felt that the school provides information to families in a variety of ways. I don't think that's, that's high enough. 77% of respondents reported agreement. They begin conversations with parents or guardians with something genuine and positive about their child and with the validation of the parent's efforts. That is an incredible testament to staff, I know there's some staff here, that you start with something positive when you're communicating with families. And then feature eight, I believe this is the last feature. Feature eight is adequate resources, so resources for staff training and coaching. Areas of need for professional development include SEL and MTSS. So that's social, emotional learning, multi-tiered systems of supports, acknowledgement of positive behavior. So when there's positive behavior, we want to acknowledge that in kids, not only be addressing negative behavior. Active supervision, so we can work together and supervise each other and support our professional development. Respondents do not feel well-informed about school or district initiatives or will support it to implement expectations required by initiatives. So we have some work to do around communication and professional development for our staff. So these are the, these are the results of the survey for the staff at Seabrook Elementary School. Now, there's one more slide, because they did give that same survey to the leadership team first. I was one of those people, Stephanie was one of those people, Jessica. So the team assessment looked at six domains, some are similar. Leadership, SEL environment, positive behavior supports, skill-building and instruction, earned behavior, database decision-making, resources and training. So this chart here, suffice it to say that only the, only the blue part here is where people indicated they felt that that domain was implemented, fully implemented. So while a lot of these pieces are partially implemented, there's still some, some work to go, work to do going forward. So we're going to be still working with these consultants over the next year, and there's some really exciting plans. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessica to talk about what we've done, where we're going, and the recommendations from here.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jessica Parsons, and I'm the Director of Special Services here. I started last July. So I came on right after essentially the survey was completed and the team invited me in to be a part of sort of the, the plan to sort of move forward. And so my job today is to sort of review with you what the recommendations were that came out of the survey from the consultants and talk with you about what we've done so far, where we're planning to go, and then answer any questions that you might have about our plan. So just to kind of recap, this spring, I had the great opportunity to present to you our MTSS plan or our multiple-tiered systems of support plan related to the CARES and SRT2 money. And thank you, board, for allowing us to use that money to build and create a very robust, multiple-tiered systems of support. And so when I'm going back to review some of these recommendations and action items, know that a lot of what you allowed us to use, utilize those, that allocation for is going to help make sure that we're able to implement the recommendations that the consultants said or recommended for us. So the first recommendation that came out of this was to map current teams' purpose and sort of the process, and really around tier one. So I want to define tier one for you, and really what tier one is what happens in the general education classroom. So really understanding the teams and the support systems that are there for classroom teachers, and more specifically around the SEL and the behavioral support. And as part of that process in establishing the multiple-tiered systems of support, you allowed us to hire a few key integral team members to add to that. So the first is a district, another district social worker. So what you may know is that Maria is an amazing social worker, but her job was twofold. It was community and family outreach, as well as student services. And with the increase in needs from COVID, as well as just our overall need for students, having one social worker for over 700 kids was a pretty big task to ask somebody to do. And so allowing us to add on another social worker, that really is going to help with the community outreach and service supports to kiddos, allows us again to increase our capacity to meet students where they're at in terms of their social and emotional needs. And then on the other side, the BCBAs. And then on the other side, the BCBA or the Board Certified Behavior Analyst that you allowed us to hire is really going to help focus on that tier one support for teachers. So that role, the BCBA, is really to focus on those proactive approaches within the classroom. So providing training for teachers, professional development, going into classrooms, helping with observations, helping with group-specific needs, helping with student-specific needs, and really trying to get kids what they need within the classroom. And that additional support that if you went back to the survey results said that teachers were looking for that additional support in the classroom. So that Board Certified Behavior Analyst is really going to focus on that tier one. And tier two, which is kids that might need a little bit extra outside of the classroom, but that focus is really going to help on that behavior support which the staff was saying that they needed help with. And then the last piece two is just the interventionists. Although focused more on sort of the academic piece, we know that if kids are struggling academically, sometimes that's when behaviors arise as well. And so if we're able to meet kids where they're at in terms of their academic needs, then that may help to offset some of the behavior as well. So we're looking really to front-load a lot of the tier one supports within the classroom for teachers and students and so that they're going to need less and less support outside of the classroom. So establishing that team really came from your approval of us being able to utilize that money to create a robust team. So that was recommendation one. And I think the hard part of all of this is that due to COVID, we weren't able to sort of implement a lot of these recommendations in the timeline that's provided on the back of their recommendations. And so I also provided you a secondary sort of roadmap that's updated and gives you sort of a new updated timeline as to when we're sort of going to move forward with their recommendations, just given some of the challenges with kind of opening school in a pandemic. And then the other piece two is allowing us to utilize those CARES and the SRT2 funds allowed us again to sort of revamp our timeline, given that. So recommendation two is supportive environment, and that's really where we sort of ended the school year. So on June 16th, the consultants came in and they did an overview of what multiple-tiered systems of support looks like in regards to sort of behavior more specifically. And they broke it out into what it looks like in the classroom as a tier one support, what it looks like in tier two, and then a little bit in terms of what it looks like. And so that overview for staff and education for staff around an SCL supportive environment and then again bringing in that staff, those staff to come into the classroom, that BCBA to come in and help sort of implement any of the recommendations that continue to come down from the SCL consultants. And so what that really looks like, just for an example, is just making sure that classroom expectations are posted clearly and that kids understand what those expectations mean and can relate them directly to their own behaviors as well as other behaviors in the classroom. And so what we found from the survey results is that there isn't necessarily a consistent, there isn't consistency across the school and even the district, Seabrook in general, around what our core values are. So that they're sort of, I think they're all within the same realm, but they're not sort of clear and consistent across the board. And so that can get confusing for kiddos when expectations look different in different classrooms, look different outside at recess versus in the cafeteria or depending on what teacher they're with versus whether it's an integrated arts or whether it's in their classroom. So one of the things that came out of the recommendation is to make sure that we, as a district, create SCL embedded core values that are consistent across both schools and then from there, developing our classroom expectations for, within each classroom, related to those SCL core values. And so that is part of what we did for professional or talked about as part of professional development on that last day. And then on July 13th, we're meeting with the consultants to go through and really establish because when this survey was done, it really, the recommendations came out for Seabrook Elementary School. But as we've been talking through this process and the value of multiple-tiered systems of support, Erin wants to bring in the middle school so that it is aligned across both schools, which makes sense, right? Our kids don't stop at fourth grade, like they continue on. And so we should have consistency with our core values and our expectations. It looks a little bit different in middle school, absolutely, but the consistency should be there. And so bringing in the middle school team to sort of bring in their input around creating that SCL, those SCL core values are going to be instrumental. And that's what our plan is on July 13th, is we're going to meet as a full district, as an administrative team to kind of define what that looks like. And then for the first time, I think, we're going to bring both of our leadership team, which is on the SES side, and they call Admin Council on the middle school side, and we're going to bring both teams together. And that process is going to start with our development of what those core values are going to look like across both schools. Then let's hold it down, I really want to get to one. I want to go back to a slide for you because I think I want to answer your question. So feature four, continuum of regulation support. So we use the term regulation a lot. And regulation just means the ability to regulate your emotions when a situation is occurring. And what we find for kids is that often we can give them tools for that to take place in the classroom, but what we saw in the survey results is if it can't take place in the classroom, there's no other option for it to take place besides maybe an administrator's office. There were no spaces in the building or staff identified to really help kids when they were dysregulated. And so their recommendation was to build a continuum of regulation support. And we're going to do that through the MTSS process. And so what we've identified is that we need some space for that to occur. And regulating a student can look like many different things. Some kids need just quiet space to calm themselves. Some kids like to get into a ball. Other kids like to put on headphones and listen to music to regulate themselves. Some kids need to do push-ups. Some kids need to get some more input where they're running around. And so it could look different for every kid, but that's really hard to do when you don't have spaces available for kiddos to do that. And so part of the process in kind of reconfiguring spaces in the elementary school is creating regulation rooms for both the middle and elementary school so that students have a place to regulate. And the goal is for this to be proactive. So if a teacher's starting to notice a kiddo dysregulating, because we often can see it coming, we know that we start to know their triggers as we get to know kids, there's a space and a person we can call to get that kiddo the support that they need in an effort to intervene potentially before an outburst were to occur or they become very, not just a behavioral outburst, but maybe they become very emotional and they're crying. And so allowing kids an opportunity and a person to regulate with. Because we also know that students, more often than not, regulate better with an adult. They need to co-regulate first before they're able to regulate themselves. And it can't just be, I'm just going to set you to the side in a different spot in the classroom and you're going to do that yourself. Some kids are able to do that, but others aren't. And so they need somebody to co-regulate with them and talk through and provide instruction around. Okay, how are you feeling right now? What are those intense feelings doing to your body? Are you noticing that your fists are clenched? Are you noticing that you're starting to tear up? Is your body getting hot? And so part of these rooms and the staff are going to help kids start to identify those triggers that they're feeling in those moments and giving them tools to connect to starting to regulate themselves. And so part of those spaces that you asked about, Kelly, are going to be utilized to work with kids in that. And again, the BCBA, we have a case manager who's going to be specifically working with kiddos who have emotional and dysregulation disorders, so they can have a space to do that versus out in the hallway where it's very public and it doesn't offer a lot of opportunity to really work with the kiddo in a confidential way. So that's a big part of what our plan is with the consultants is to create this continuum of support for kids really around, the focus first is around sort of that behavioral and that social, emotional approach. And then lastly, I just wanted to take an opportunity on that last roadmap, that updated roadmap. I just wanted to give you, there's a lot of dates and stuff, but I wanted to give you sort of the up next. And so like I mentioned, on July 13th, SES, SMS District, and SAU admin reps are going to meet with Brian and Eric and we're really going to determine what an SCL-supported environment looks like. We want to, we really want to know what we need to do in both schools, district-wide, to create an SCL-supported environment. And then from there, the goal is to promote positive culture, climate, and connection in each classroom, school-wide, and district-wide. Within that, we're going to create what's called a host environment model. So what a model classroom should look like that embeds all of the positive culture, climate, and connection in. And then we're also going to determine what some non-negotiables are. And that's something the consultants recommended, is things that aren't going to happen in our school, whether it's, you know, certain tones or words or responses to students or to staff members. But we're going to create some non-negotiables and discuss what those look like so that people can continue to feel safe here, both staff and students. And then the last thing, our goal is to re-establish what our SCL-connected core values are. Because again, like I said, SES has theirs, SMS has theirs, but again, the kids are here from pre-K to eight, and it's really important that we're consistent across the board on what our connected values are. And then in addition to that, we're going to establish our training schedule to continue to provide teachers and staff the supports that they need to be able to implement the SCL approaches and the positive behavioral supports that we are trying to implement. I know that was really long and wordy, but I'm happy to take any questions or explain anything because sometimes I go into teacher speak and I forget.
So I had asked to check this out just because I have a concern with the fact that for the last few years, we seem to be losing a lot of staff, valuable staff. And in Seabrook, we pride ourselves for longevity of our teachers. And I'd really like to get to the bottom of why that is happening and what we can do to make our teachers feel appreciated or whatnot. I feel like you've sat on this for a year. And had I not asked to see this, would we not spoke about it? I'm kind of confused as to why you've sat on this for a whole year.
So I apologize.
I don't give a...
Give me the answer that what I can say to you. And I should have, you know, hindsight, in my presentation to you when we talked about MTSS is I probably should have not assumed that you had sort of all of this information, but like really what I was, what we were doing is taking this information that we had in terms of what teachers needed for support and really, you know, strongly around that behavioral, how we can support them behaviorally and kids regulating. That's where we really wanted to take a bulk of the CARES money is to be able to support teachers. Because my thought is if teachers feel supported, then that's when you see longevity.
Should have been back on that then, why are you getting such a low rate of return on the survey then? We only have forty percent of staff that's returning the survey. So how can we get an accurate representation of really how everybody's feeling? We already have a fairly consistent, it seems like, response from staff. But if we're not getting all of the staff members, how are we really, or even a majority? We don't even have a majority, we have a minority of them. How are we really getting a handle on what is happening? And then in turn, figuring out why staff are leaving and why, you know, these other situations are being put in place.
So I can't speak to why the respondents were on the lower side. What I can speak to is in my observation in this last year is that it was very clear to me that a lot of the things that they were saying in here were, in a sense, I could see that happening, that there wasn't, there wasn't a ton of opportunity for teachers to, and don't want to use the COVID excuses. You know, we also had to cohort kids and so it was difficult to sort of mix. But I think it was very apparent that in our tier one and tier two, we had a lack of ability to support teachers when behaviors came about. And so I could see that. So I think that although the percentage was below fifty percent, I don't think that their responses were inaccurate in terms of what their needs were. And so I think it's very important that we take that with, that we take that as a priority in our work to support teachers specifically around sort of that behavioral and that social, emotional approach. I also know that if we do that and teachers feel supported, that typically the climate in the building improves when we're improving our ability to support teachers. And I think it's not always a matter of having more staff, but I think it really, in a school that has over seven hundred kids, to not have a Board Certified Behavior Analyst, if you go in and you research a lot of school districts, that is sort of something that has to be there to support teachers in their implementation of supporting positive behaviors. So my hope is that in doing a lot, in fulfilling a lot of these recommendations, that we're going to, teachers are going to feel more supported and therein, we increase a more positive climate for everyone.
So when the survey was handed out, was it handed out prior, you said it was prior to COVID?
No, it was one or two years.
Okay, so how did they, what was the form of returning the survey?
It was all Google survey.
Electronically, yeah.
Right, so it happened via email. So it wasn't anonymous. So in other words, if there was staff that was maybe uncomfortable with submitting results because they felt maybe that they didn't want their name behind the survey? Maybe that's why, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, because I'll be honest with you, there has, there was, and I will keep this confidential because we're obviously, but there, somebody did reach out to me and a couple of the people that have left, we were given one reason and that was actually not the reason that we, what I was told on one particular part. More than one, but I'll say one particular one was leaving and it wasn't the reason we were getting. So I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I think, I feel like the school board needs to be more involved because we're being told one thing, but then we're being told another. And I don't know if it's because maybe administrators are given one reason because somebody's not feeling comfortable giving the truth. So I don't know if I bring this up now, but I think it's appropriate that maybe even the ones that have decided to leave this year, that maybe the board does look into maybe doing accident interviews of people that are leaving just to kind of make it easier, you know, to figure out why people are leaving. Because not everybody feels comfortable coming to administration, obviously, by the survey. They don't feel supported and if they are looking for a reference or if they're staying and they're uncomfortable, we've already seen one case where somebody felt uncomfortable coming forward and seeing how they felt. So it's interesting to know that the surveys were turned in through email.
Well, it was totally anonymous though, because when you create a Google survey and send that to someone, we did not require their name and we did not require their email. So we asked them to identify their position.
Yep.
So they could choose teacher or, there were a whole list of categories. So paraprofessional, teacher, support service, administrator, food service, assistant. But we did not ask for names or emails, so it was totally anonymous.
Okay, so it just gets submitted, it does get submitted through an email address?
Exactly. We sent it via email to the whole staff? But then when they submit, it goes through a whole Google system?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that makes it better.
Is there a plan to resurvey at the end of a certain period of time? Of course, we're still working with them to figure out whether staff does feel more supported.
Yeah, so that's a great question. We met with them last week just to review the results again because it had been a year since they had given us the presentation. And they, oh, this was a very tedious survey. I forget how many questions were asked.
Hundred, exactly.
Thank you, sorry. And so there, from what they've extracted from the survey, they were able to pick sort of the highlight areas in which they want to sort of dipstick again. And so the plan is that they periodically start to go through and survey staff, not a hundred questions, but more pointed towards exactly what we're looking to implement through their recommendations.
I did see that you said something about, well, not you particularly, but one of the papers I saw somewhere, that said something about putting more community meetings where like, you know, the public could come in. Are there also ones available for staff that they could come in and share their concerns in a way that's not so, feels so, they can't speak in certain situations? Are there safer or more comfortable ways that staff and the public could share their feelings and their thoughts about things about, you know, fear of whatever, their profession or?
I can just jump in for it. So I think one thing is in terms of the results, I think it was unfortunately not the greatest time for research. greatest time for response rate because it was the same time we were getting surveys for, yeah, do you prefer remote or do you prefer refer, you know, there were so many, I mean, I had some people saying, what survey was that? Oh my God, I thought it was another one from this, I didn't even answer it. Some people just kind of survey burnout, you know, or, or saying like, we've talked about this, we just need more resources. I don't want to develop a hundred-question survey, kind of thing. So I think, you know, having a more consistent tool that we'll look back at and collect the data is helpful. In terms of, to your point, comfort level, you know, I think we do need to provide opportunities. I know that not this past year, the year before, when we had started this process, Dr. Lupini came at the beginning of January and people scheduled time through Rhonda, his office, and he came and they could meet in groups or individually. And, you know, administration here at the school was not involved. And so that data actually was shared, I think, the first meetings with the consultant to Caroline, with the consultants. So they had that perspective. I think the one thing that threw a wrench into some of this with, in terms of COVID too, was the consultants couldn't come to the school and spend some time. So I know like my staff was really like, they need to kind of see what we're dealing with, what it looks like, what our atmosphere is like. You know, like they need to see their kid running down the hallway and stuff like that. So I think, you know, returning to more normal, we'd be able to do some of that. And we had three, one of the, the BCBAA consultant, you know, once we could have people in the building coming in and working in classrooms and with groups of students. So I think that helped, you know, all these are data points and it all needs to come together. You know, in terms of staff leaving, I think, you know, we've had, you know, turnover, I, I, you know, every school does some turnover. I know one year I was here, we had eight teachers retire. So I think it's hard to, you know, look at the data. I think, you know, it is about some conversations and figuring out what's making people stay or leave.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll speak on that a little bit. I, I did have Charlene, our HR manager, polls and numbers on turnover. This, this year isn't out of line, maybe look at historical averages, you know, some year, I think, last year, we only had twelve employees that either resigned or retired. But, and you know, this year was, or twenty twenty-one, it's twenty, the year prior is twenty-seven now.
Retiring a little bit, and just leaving to go to another district.
Well, the, the point is, is that it's, it's in line when you look historically. And, you know, when you, when we talk about exit interviews, just so that you're aware, typically that's, you try to have HR conducting exit interviews. So that is an impartial kind of independent, you know, sounding board. Typically people are, you know, s- some people decline and, you know, nothing we can do about that. However, usually people are, you know, fairly open at that point because they are leaving. So we, we have been fairly successful, you know, conducting those exit interviews for, for HR. So, you know, again, that's anecdotal, you can't, I mean, you can't account for whether it's completely truthful or sugar-coated, but, but that is, you know, some of that, there's data points that we're already going to collect.
Are they reviewing the, the similarities between, I mean, I know obviously everybody uses their personal, you know, feelings about whatever, but are they, are there connections that you made between people that are exiting? I mean, because anybody can tell you a story, but if you're hearing the same story or the same overall theme with multiple people leaving, I would be concerned.
Yeah, so, so in my brief discussions with, with Charlene, she hasn't seen any trends. So I think that's what we're looking for is, hey, is, are we seeing that culture or whatever is a reason that people are, you know, potentially leaving? There, there's not been anything out of the norm. I, I will also say that, I mean, if you look, you know, nationwide, there's, there's a complete outflow of employees in all organizations. Because this past year, people were stuck. They, they stayed in their organization, whether it was school or it was business. You know, and then we saw that here. We had very little turnover last year. But this year, is the, you know, everything's opening up. So people are free to explore other options. Maybe they were, they were waiting or they were, you know, they, you know, they, there's obviously, there was a, there was, there was a, a full year where there wasn't, there wasn't much movement. So now we're seeing, I mean, there's a, there's a very in-depth Wall Street Journal article on this where you're seeing huge turnover, you know, across all industries. So I don't think we're out of norm. When I'm hearing from HR, this isn't, this really isn't much different than a normal year. Now, should we explore it further? Absolutely. So we will, you know, I will work with Charlene and the, you know, the building leadership to take a look at the turnover and why people are leaving and identify if there is anything that we can address. But I'm, I personally am not terribly concerned from that, from a turnover perspective. Other than normal. We're always concerned about turnover. I don't want to get on my side. We never want to lose anyone.
I'm just back to Jessica's point in terms of like getting the report and everything. So I think, you know, we have been working with the information. And I think at the time the survey was completed, our team changed even between the time that the survey was taken to the implementation of the plan. So for instance, Jessica's on board, we had Janine as the school counselor. So, but Caroline and Bill were good about, they were part of those discussions right out of the gate. So when we had those results, we could take off and run. And either with COVID, we got things started, we did a social contrast with staff, tried to look at like the self-regulation piece and, and coming up with some commonalities across the school. We've done, I would say at least four different PD opportunities throughout the year, focused on this besides some smaller stuff. So I'm sure these results with the, with the staff too. So we have been trying to adapt, you know, based on COVID and do how we can. Hopefully the consultants can do more in-person as, because of great value, especially doing social emotional learning presentations. Right, and to do it in person instead of doing it online. Yeah, I wasn't even aware of this survey until I asked if maybe we should have a, a survey done. And, so we, you know, didn't even have any information to go off of until today, a year later. Um, do you think that, I know you said that they're going to work with us a little more at a lot of certain things. Just because I feel like we might have been robbed a little on the, on this because of COVID.
And, and you're absolutely right. It, it's just hard, like a lot of their, their recommendations are wonderful, but given what we had for constraints and it was really hard to do. I think we did as much as we can, we worked with staff, like Stephanie said, on a social contract, talking about, in order for us to be, in order for kids to be regulated, adults have to be regulated. And there's certain things that we need to follow as adults to do that. So we did a lot of work at the beginning of the year on that. And then talking through how to best support kids. So they did a whole social emotional PD in February. And again, I outlined a lot of this stuff on the timeline for you, as well as some behavioral support stuff as part of that PD. It just, it obviously is elongated. I think the plan was for them to be, to work with us for two to three years, correct me if I'm, was that, that the plan? And so I think our goal is the same. Uh, I think we've revamped our teams. I think we have a really great structure in police. I'm really excited. The thing about this is, it's not going to, it's not going to be fixed overnight. It's, it's a, it's a process, right? We're making some pretty significant changes in terms of how we support kiddos within the classroom and outside of the classroom. And I can see though, that within the next probably three to five years, you're going to really see the impact in terms of how, you know, at the end of the day, if kids are well-regulated and supported and connected, you're going to see the results academically for them, right? And so it's going to take a little bit of time, but I think we, we're going to see some really good results based on the, the plans and the recommendations that they've, that they've provided. And with your support in, um, supporting us to kind of move forward with the multiple-tiered systems of support. Because really, without that system, without these sort of interventions in place, there's no system. And so you're really not following kids in a systematic way to give them what they need. You're not using data to support that and you're not using that to support teachers either, so.
I was going to add the same, Jessica, I think the same can be said for teachers, right? Without that support, without those connections, it, this is a very isolating job. And I think the last year and a half, it was a bit extremely isolating job. And it's a difficult job, right? You've got a classroom full of children, you want to give every single one your best. You should work incredibly hard to do their best by kids. But the challenges in this profession have grown over the years, right? We know society-wide that more and more children come to school with some, some experience of trauma, with anxiety, you know, with challenges that they're facing on a day-to-day basis and so do our adults, right? And so if we can support them, we're going to see those gains in our children in both their social emotional regulation and in their academic growth. And, and teachers are the most valuable resource that we have in schools, right? It's our employees, it's the people who work with kids every day, right? Who come here to support the mission of, of growing children. And I, you know, I think everybody in this room wants to be given their full support. We think these consultants will help with that. And part of it is giving the teachers some tools, but part of it is also building their connections with each other and with their administrators in a time, you know, as we come back from this time where everyone has felt very disconnected from one another.
I believe, I believe that, you know, you know, making a red teachers and make sure that they're getting what they need and that the public knows you sweat children if they don't have the tools they need.
What would your plan be, one second, as you print, to like, after Lupini, how to set up specific times to really meet with staff? Do you have plans like that of? Well, I'm hoping to, uh, SAU-wide, I think specific to this piece, that's partly a role the consultants will play. I think the BCBAA being in the classrooms, the consultants, they get in here to observe and give feedback and work through the plan. Both have the opportunity to do that. And, well, I like to think of myself as a very neutral person. I have this title that, that makes me part of administration. So I may not be the best person for some of that. Uh, you know, I would agree with Matt that HR is generally seen as neutral. They're the people who make sure your health plan is in place and support you when you're trying to work through paperwork or figure out, you know, what sick time you have left or you've got a health crisis. I think they are generally seen as dissociated from administration. And they are, you know, they honor that role, are very thoughtful about, you know, if there's a theme that emerges, in my experience, they bring that to us in a very confidential and thoughtful way. So yes, I want to meet with people. I want to meet with parents. I want to meet with board members. I want to meet with staff and administrators. But I may not be the best person for this particular piece, right? There will be themes perhaps that emerge, but in terms of that individual confidentiality, it trounces low. I'm not going to get, get the results that you're.
All right, guys, any other questions or?
Um, the one thing I would, the thing that kind of sets me back a little bit, and you guys have a great handle on this, I'm just going to say it. But the thing that sets me back is I feel like every school board meeting we have, we get these really bright, shiny, awesome things that are going on and they're amazing. The things that go on in the schools really are amazing. But we're never given any problems or challenges that are happening. So when this comes up and then we look at survey data and we see that there's a culture issue, where did that come from? So I think what I'm, and definitely China is wrong, but I'd love to see on the principal report a couple of problems and challenges that we can help you guys. You know, if you can put on the table and say, this is what we're struggling with, this is what we're working through, this is what we're working on. So we can kind of get a real aspect of what's happening in the school.
I, I, we can definitely bring that back and talk about and see how we can do something like that. I think, you know, obviously a lot of things tie up with like, you know, org, it might be.
Totally got it, babe.
This time of year, it's true, it is true, so it might, I don't know how much, like it could be, help us with those problems and be saying that, well, you need this content. So it's, it's hard. I don't envy your role because you don't have all the information.
Yeah, well, I think for, for us, we're usually like the last resort, like if there's any issues with staff or whatever. They, you know, they go to the principal, they don't feel hurt, they go to the superintendent and then they come to us. I don't want them to have to come to us. I want them to feel like they're heard and things can get resolved without having to come to us. Because that, that takes a while for somebody to come to us.
Does the board have goal-setting?
In August.
Yeah, so maybe that's part of the conversation to have at that time is to think about how we can candidly share some of the challenges. I, I think it's hard for us as administrators to not share some solutions we have in mind when we talk about challenges, right? That's, that's just how we're wired. But, but I think that would be a good opportunity to continue that part of the conversation.
And, and with that as well, and I'm just going to go out with this, as a board, we need to be receptive of the problems and challenges that, that you give to us, you know. And we, that can be a challenge for us, absolutely. We're people, we all have our own passions or our opinions. But I think that when we get to the August meeting, we can definitely talk about that and make sure that if we're wanting you guys to share, we have to be receptive. I know you're laughing because it's true. I've been in this situation myself. You've got to be receptive to it and you've got to also show that you're receptive to it. You know, so anyway, we can do that because we're real, right? So we can, we can put the work into it and, and do that might make it a little easier to bring stuff to the table.
Any other questions? Great, and thank you, Caroline and Jessica.
Thank you very much.
And I think that is pretty much it. I just have one more question and, just, I know it's probably still a little early, but do we have an idea of what next school year is going to look like as far as online, masks?
So there's the problem with the break Thursday.
Stephanie and I talked about that a little bit this afternoon. I actually have a magic eight ball on my phone. It, it's, it's really early to make that prediction, I feel like. I think we're all very optimistic that we'll be able to come back fully in person and hopefully without masks whatsoever in a typical start to the year. But honestly, we don't a hundred percent know what may happen with spread of the Delta variant among school-aged children. We don't know if, if there may or may not be a vaccine for school-aged children. We don't know if the CDC is going to change its guidance. I think that we'll have more information by the time of the August meeting. But I feel like right now, I would be not truthful to tell you.
But if we were to go back tomorrow to school and the things are the way they are right now, you could foresee a normal school year.
We had summer school start today.
Yes.
Masks off, you know?
Three days we're not wearing masks today and I can see their beautiful CV. And it, it like melted my heart.
Oh, yeah, I have, I have clients, I haven't seen their face, like new clients all year. I've never, I, I'm just seeing their face. I'm like, I don't think you're the client.
Same thing for me, but yeah, it's nice to see people's faces.
I, I think we're going to be in a good position. I mean, we talk about like, we're not able to do everything we want to, but we were open, like we were on the old schools.
Right, in the nation.
They were open, five days a week, all students that wanted to come.
No, I, you guys did work.
So if we're able to do that last year, I have pretty good confidence in planning for next year.
So can you back on that then, if we were to just say as is, you know, as things are now, are we still separating for cohorts? Or we got to get back to a more, you know, I don't want to say inclusive.
I don't know, so obviously I wasn't planning on leaving as early as I did this year. So I, you know, there's, I still need more time to have some conversations with staff. But there's, there's things from this model, I think someone like that will say, that we really liked, you know? Like there's some aspects of not everybody being in this loud cafeteria. It was really good for some of our kids, you know? And so maybe is it some kind of blended model, you know, those kind of things? But, um, so I think there's some takeaways with every challenge, you, you come out with some new learnings. And so I think it's not just, do we do the old? Or do, do we do what we did last year or do we do what we did the previous year? I think it's what do we take from our previous experience to do the best that we can for the students? And that might be taking, you know, we liked having some more support right in the classroom. We like, you know, having, uh, smaller groups, so the more we can do that, the better. You know, we're also dealing with elementary school and we were, we were able to be open because we had self-contained classes to begin with, you know, we just had less travel time. Obviously, that's different middle school and high school. So I think, hard to say right now, I keep spinning the magic eight ball, but, you know, I, I don't think it's going back to the old. I think it's some kind of, what's the most, your kids have changed. Educators have changed through this experience and there's takeaways that we can learn from and make things better, so. Any other questions? Um, I'm going to have, you just come up to the podium and give your name and your affiliation.
Oh, hi, I'm Kathy. I just have a question, because you had comments at the beginning of the meeting. Hi, I'm Kathy. I just have a question. Because you had comments at the beginning of the meeting for the audience, but not comments for us after we hear everything. So that's my question. Why would you have the comments prior to the meeting starting and not after?
Yeah, the question, I don't have a problem with that. I think sometimes just the people's reading agenda and may have questions right off the bat and brought them here. But I have no problem as the chair allowing people to ask questions or speaking at the end. I have no problem putting it up at the end of our meeting as well.
Thank you, Jessica.
So we do, make sure we do that for the next meeting, put on, put a comment maybe at the, the end of the meeting as well, just in case. Do you have any other questions? Anybody else have any questions that?
I do.
Just state your name and your affiliation.
Hi, your name is Jennifer. I am just wondering if we have other schools in the SAU 21 that are using this platform with the supportive systems? Do we have this with handballs? Do we have this with?
Karen can probably give you more specific data, but multiple-tiered systems of support is required now in all schools across New Hampshire. I think you are actually ahead of the curve here in getting it up and running to meet the needs of your students and staff.
So this will follow through into where it kind of where we have our children that are really at a very crucial age?
It will.
It will, absolutely.
Anybody else?
I'm looking for a motion to go into not public.
Only a motion to go into not public?
Second, others in favor? Start the regular meeting back up at six fifteen. We don't really have anything further on our agenda to discuss. Is there any other questions from the audience?
I, yeah.
I just think that obviously there was a reason for the results of the survey. And like Kelly said, they weren't comfortable, obviously, taking the survey. So I think that something else needs to be done so that teachers can voice their concerns or issues not to administrative people, but somebody that they can actually be truthful to. And I, and I get your point about HR is for that, but I work for a corporate restaurant and I understand that going to HR is still going to corporate. So I know it's not corporate, but it's kind of the same. Administrators are still administrators and teachers are not going to be, ever feel comfortable voicing their actual concerns to the people who are their bosses essentially.
Well, we're hoping that, well, they, they're coming back to do more work. So we're hoping that, that this is the neutral party that will help that. And we're hoping that the, the added support that's coming their way will help that.
I just think that your turnout should say, speak volumes really, for the reason that there's an issue clearly. So.
We know that. That's why we asked for it.
And I just think that ask for, their voices need to be heard more. I don't think that it's really said in their service. That's.
No, I, I agree. And we, we are going to do everything we can to make them comfortable and give them a habit to do that.
Thank you.
Am I able to speak? You know, not a resident?
Sure.
Just state your name and your, your affiliation. So my name is Jacqueline. I'm a fourth grade teacher here in Seber. I'm just actually going to teach or talk on behalf of my team. We, for the last three years, have been teaching under a team teaching cohort model, not cohort model. And it was brought to our attention probably in May that we are no longer going to be able to team teach next year. The reason we started team teaching, so, was that when the kids transitioned to four teachers in the middle school in fifth grade, it made the transition easier because they would have two. So like Ms. Noonan and I would teach, I teach math, science, social studies. She teaches reading and writing. They would switch between the two classes, two and a half hours apiece. It was brought to our attention that we're no longer team teaching. We were told it's because we don't want to team teach. That was not the case. None of our teammates in this room, three out of four of us, have ever said we didn't want to team teach again. And the decision was made without us. And we just want to make sure while everybody's here, that we know that that's something we still believe strongly in. We feel like it really benefits the students for next year going into fifth grade. And that's something that was kind of taken away from us without us being consulted or asked. And we were just kind of told. And it's really, we felt disrespected and not trusted in our profession. We've been doing this a long time. I've been here 15, 16 years. Kate, 15, Janice, six. We're good at what we do. We love our kids. We know what's best, or we believe we know what's best. And we don't think that that's the best decision for them going forward.
Thank you. Just going to suggest, I think that staff should be aware that team funding is through principal, have principal, superintendent, and then if you have a concern, you can certainly readdress the board. But it's the first time I'm hearing about concerning as well, so.
Yes, if our support's hearing of, of them as well, is that is that what's happening is a more team teaching or?
We were going back to those of the date.
But, so how long is the team teaching that happens, happening?
Can I just suggest that let's not meet this board discussion now? Let's go through the process and then if it needs to come back to the board, we'll do that. We can ask administration to provide an update at the next meeting. But I, there's a mechanism for conversation and dialogue. I know trust feels low right now. Communication is clearly been a concern. We need an opportunity to, to work on that. But I think circumventing the system isn't going to help anybody with trust and communication. It's going to unfortunately undermine that.
I'm going to have, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm going to have to disagree with that. I think that this is a direct example of exactly what we're dealing with right now and that our educators are not comfortable to talk to. With all due respect, and I, and I agree that it's probably a multi-tiered thing going on, but I don't see any problem at all with an educator having a problem and bringing it to the board, especially since it's a conversation. It's not like something we're voting on. There's just concern that their voices are not heard. I, I don't see a problem with that.
When did this team teach term stop? When was, when was this decision made? Recently?
So I can go back to what I said.
In the last couple of weeks?
So ultimately, are we just going to schedule, I mean, if this is an, if this is an issue, which obviously it is, I mean, is it something that should be scheduled and then work its way up the chain, is basically what you're saying? And then work its way to us? Talk with the.
Well, and I just, I'd like to make it known on the record that we did talk to administration and there's, we were just told this is how it's going to be. So we were waiting until.
Okay, so the union would be the next step before the school board?
Yes.
So just for the application purposes, I mean, I'm, I'm, so, principal? Your first time in. Unions. School board.
I, this makes it uncomfortable that I just have a couple of questions just can't be answered. I just want to know how long we've been doing it? Is this pre-COVID? I, I just don't even understand if it's pre-COVID that we were doing this and now we're not, or?
Well, I mean, it sounded like it was pre-COVID based on that explanation.
I mean, we did it for a year and now we're not doing that. I don't, I don't.
We did it for a few years and then when it took COVID, we actually changed for this current school year because we had some more of a self-alignment and staffing just changed.
Hi, Kianis Christian, fourth grade teacher. That's not entirely true. I did team teach this year with Heather, Heather Lister. I taught math, science, and social studies. And Heather taught reading and writing myself.
Yes.
Both of your sons.
Very close.
We've been doing it for three years. I think the reason it's been brought up this evening is because when we decided that we wanted to try this, we had to present what we wanted to do before the board.
Yes.
And the board had to approve it. So in our minds, as educators, we feel as though if another change is being made, that another presentation should be made as to why we shouldn't be team teaching and the board should have to approve it again. That's where we're coming from. Thank you.
So maybe at our next, you know, we can get an update on the reasoning, give us a little more information and hopefully we can work with these ladies and figure out what's best for the kids, actually. Anything else? All right, I make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Again, thank you all for coming out. These are people here.